Okay, so this is April 6, 2022. And we are the Oregon State Marine Board and we are meeting in Bend. It's already been the first time we are able to get out. So first thing we'd like to do is to call this work session a order and then give a big thank you to Ben Parks for giving us a wonderful tour that we just finished. Rachel and Ian showed us some of the projects and talked about the ambitious plan that they had put together. So with that, I think we'll move right on into the work session. So I think we have Janine Billek who is first up on our list.
Thank you Chair Early. And can Ashley tell me whether this is a good volume or if I need to speak up more? Is that good? Okay, I just want to make sure. So for the record, my name is Janine Billek. I'm the facilities program manager and I'm going to go ahead and share this. All right, so I thought long and hard about what does the facilities program do? And when I looked at every aspect of the things we do, I decided our principal function is to remove barriers to access. And we do it through a variety of ways. We do it through our technical assistance, we do it through design, and of course, we do it through funding. And I want to walk the board through this process. And at any point of your questions, let me know. So the first part is I have some absolutely amazing staff. And the sad part is that we are going to see a 50% burnout in staff by the end of summer. And so to kind of give you an idea, Stuart, who's up in the top, he's one of our senior facility designers. And then Adeline is also a senior facility designer. Tony is the newest of my staff and he's a facility designer. And then Joe Seaverston, he is our planning and GIS person. So when you see the GIS maps that a lot of times with Joe's presentation, those were the things he helped me with. He maintained the interactive online Bodie Oregon map. He does a lot of that as well as he participated in Ben Park and Rex's planning process as well as many other ones. So he's a fabulous asset to bring into the program. And then Jennifer Peterson is our admin for our program. She is kind of our help. She connects us all, makes sure that we've got everything set and we can find everything. She's a really cute person. So and the reason I'm bringing this up is when we start talking to land managers, Bodie is not their highest priority. It is often a work of meaning. And if we started that conversation of, hey, this is a great idea, but it's going to take us seven to 10 years to get through the design permitting. And by the way, it would give me cost a couple million dollars. It stops those conversations. And we want to remove those barriers. We want to take and break these things apart into smaller pieces that show a positive momentum to keep the community behind them. Their elected officials be behind them. And having staff that is talented and knowledgeable, it makes this a lot easier to address. So part of the reason we do this. So historically, the facilities program has provided services to do this. And it really is to help the landowners or the potential access provider navigate some of those problems. Because it is complex. It's generally not an area they have a lot of experience. And if they did, it was probably five years ago and that process has changed. It's also we want to have safe usable sites. We want consistency of experience. We heard today that access shouldn't say it's accessible. It should be access for everyone. And those are the things we're looking at. The other part is because we are often the funding agency, we want to protect and maximize that useful life of those infrastructure investments. It takes a long time to get through the process. And so by us providing some of these services, it really is removing those barriers, those hesitations, the fear, the trepidation of going forward. So how does this really come about? So a lot of times we get phone calls, emails, or they've noticed something. There was a storm. There was an event. Somebody called to tell them, hey, you're moving the bottom of a boat ramp. You know, you have a hole in the dock. Hey, your drain field is no longer functioning and you're having sewage pump up through the top. Those are things that come about and we start those conversations. Sometimes they come directly from voters to us and we start involving the facility. And are you aware of this condition? And we start this process with them. So this is some of the assistance we provide. We'll go out and we'll look at existing infrastructure. We will look at property for new infrastructure or to expand infrastructure. We will evaluate the feasibility of development. We'll do planning processes. We'll attempt public meetings. We will be presenters at public meetings when we're talking about concepts. We work in work groups as well as we review consultant designs and provide expert feedback to the landowners. The developed surveys, the design engineering permitting. We go out and we'll inspect things during critical times during construction to make sure top ramp, tow ramp are on correct elevation. We've got slopes, permit compliance is happening. And we do a lot of items. We get a lot of calls of, hey, this part seems wrong. They're not working right. Do you have an idea of what to do? Or, hey, this thing is broken. I can't find a replacement part. Who should we call? We do a lot of this to help people get through this process. And then these are our priorities. Because we do have limited staff, we have limited resources. The assessment of existing infrastructure and property is a high priority. We need to at least keep this Bodie access system in place. The consultation for the repair components and operation maintenance. We'll take a lot of calls of, hey, we're experiencing this problem. And we're thinking of maybe an ordinance. We're thinking about this. Do you have any recommendations? And we'll give them copies, existing plan we're aware of. We'll put them in connection with other people who have experienced a similar situation and how they resolved it. So we're kind of this network to help facilitate how the landowners are approaching some of the challenges. And then the planning part. We found a few years ago that if we weren't at the table during the planning process, it often put us in an adverse role where they had already decided where that hole in the water was going to be. And then we're coming at it hydraulically, looking at the engineer and going, that's the wrong place. That's going to be a maintenance nightmare. It's a constant battle. It's going to be hard to permit. And now we're in this opposition with what the planning process told them to do from public input. So we're now taking a much more upfront approach to try to get involved in that part so we can help guide things from looking at the water, looking at things that are permitting high. This is a lot easier location. It might be a great dog park or a great amphitheater. But from all other aspects, it's a better hole in the water for that Bodie access site. And so doing that really lets us start forming long-term relationships and partnerships. So when we get to the end of this planning process and they want to implement, we're all in the same place, then we agree this is the best place to do it. The survey stuff, there's a lot of times where we get calls where voters have experienced with some sholings and ramps and okay, something changed. We'll go pick up survey. We have to do the survey to help make the facilities happen. And then of course, the design engineering permit. So a few years ago, Ash Law, I think it was when he was first on the board, he had a situation where we had helped someone. They had a change of leadership and they backed out of a project that had already been permitted. And we had no recourse. There was nothing we could do to say, boy, that's a lot of time that the voters have paid for. We've just now lost with no problem without. Then we started having these technical assistance agreements. And essentially what they do is they say, we estimate we're going to spend this much time and the energy and resources in helping you to get here. And as long as you go the distance and do this, it's no cost. In the event you change, we reserve the right to recover the time and effort that we spent into it. And the feedback we've had has been phenomenal. People like this because it's a document that they can say, hey, we've got a commitment here and you need to go that distance. And so it's been a very successful change we implemented. Unfortunately, we had a harder lesson to experience to do that. But it's been well received and it's been a positive part.
So just a question, a quick question then. On those agreements, on those technical assistance agreements, if somebody needs to put a pause on their project, not just completely drop it, but they're like, yeah, we just, we need more time. You just put the whole thing, you change a timeline on those agreements then at that time? So that they still are under obligation, but then they'll get an additional?
Yes. Yeah, so we worked on my COVID. That was a shocker the other day.
What I was thinking?
Yeah, so we don't penalize. And then basically, they need to pursue it due diligence. And so as long as they're making this faith effort and they are responsive and they're going through all of these little steps to get to the construction project, we don't penalize. It's not something we want to do, but we found that having a little bit of team to be able to recover the investment that the voters have paid for, it's just an extra reassurance. Thank you. So let me get into all of these specialty reports. And some of these used to be very incidental and now they've become very stagnant. So archaeological, so I am the agency's tribal liaison. So I coordinate with all of Oregon's nine tribal governments. We consult with them on every grant project. And projects that aren't in a grant process, they're in the early stage. When we've got an agreement that we're going to commit certain resources to help with, we start that consultation with the tribal nation to make sure that the archaeological process is not going to surprise us. And the nine tribes have been very gracious with our efforts to do this. And anymore, it is becoming a normal thing. One of the recent things that's come about in certain areas of the state is to give also underwater survey, ground penetrating radar in underwater areas because of all the dams and what was previously on dry land is now submerged. To make sure that we are not impacting any historic or cultural things. Just as we've been working with state parks, at the Bay area state park. And they have spent over $120,000 on archaeological work that they're going to get pre-agreements cost for. And a lot of that was some of the submerged work that was done. And so, you know, it's becoming a much more normal routine thing. And then we are doing archaeological analysis on any kind of boat ramp, ferry dam. In a few cases, we also are doing it for docks because of the pilot and the stability. The permitting agencies they're wanting to see is things that we want to know some. How much, how much edge protection is needed? Because we spend a lot of time trying to balance the permitting, the design stability, as well as being environmentally conscious. We want to minimize the impact used as primary materials, equipment, so that we're being good stewards while out there. Yes, Greg?
Do we ever have to do GIS?
Generally, we do not. In my 20-plus years, I've had to do one. But normally, if it smells like that, we do not want to pursue that. Because that could be a career project. It could easily take 25 to 35 years.
If Ben's involved in it, you talk about the area. If one is required, how do we go coordinate accomplishing it?
So sometimes we will have a consultant. Sometimes we will have staff. It depends. It could say, as a land agency, they generally have the staff and the experience to do it. And we will recognize that as match. So we generally avoid it if we can because it is very expensive, very time consuming to do so. And then the environmental part. So a decade ago, it was acknowledged that the riparian habitat on the fringe of the water was riparian habitat. Now it's being used wetland. So wetland delineations will become much more common as well as needing to have a wetland scientist to review things for mitigation. It's becoming a more complex process. So some of these, the landowner will determine that they're going to fund it. And we will consult with them on the scope of work, making sure it's going to meet all the requirements of the permitting agency so that their end product is a good end product and not a, here's part A and then you have to pay for part B. But they may want to do it because of their budget, that their financial situation, that their staffing time, that they're going to choose to do this outside of our grant process. And work with them to acknowledge that that is an expense that could have been eligible for grants and they trust them to use. So we recognize it as match and you've seen that for grants. And sometimes we cost share on these. Many of them can fit into our small grant program now that the new rules in place have changed the limitation of the $20,000. It gives us a lot more flexibility to respond to some of these as well. And the permit case. So the first six items on here are the most common permits that any project will have if they are looking below ordinary high water. Some of these are also coming around if we're working within the flood plain. And no surprise, majority of Bodie facilities are located within the flood plain floodway. If they're water dependent uses. So that is taking some extra work. The land conservation with the CDMAs, the Postal Zone Management Act, they have a permit that applies to coastal zone area. And then ODOD, the Dryland Leaves Permit is associated with any new entry or exit from a road. So that's part of it. Then here's some other ones.
I knew you'd work them.
So these are initial consultations. And with the wideway access grant, we are now working more in the National Wild and Historic Rivers Act areas. So we are coordinating now on a federal lens with compliance with that. So as an example, in scenic areas, we have to look at what is the color, the texture? How could we camouflage what we're developing? What is the limitation? And those are things that we previously didn't really have to do because we weren't working in many areas that were covered underneath that. So it's opened up some new things for us, which is fantastic that we're able to do this work. But it's just another layer of consultation and review. And then, you know, state parks also has their scenic waterways. They have a review and a requirement for a state scenic waterway to also filter a process. So it's a very lengthy process. And I would love to say that these processes are concurrent. And unfortunately, they're not. There are many things that are delayed pending another consultation. So as an example, underneath the Corps of Engineers permit, they're required to consult with NOAA. And National Fisheries Services are of NOAA. Many other agencies will not do their portion so they know how much of the scope of the project NOAA is going to impact. So until that is done, DQ generally doesn't start. Tribal consultation doesn't start. Any of these other things don't happen because NOAA often will say, hmm, I like this. I don't like this. What can you do for this? And so a lot of times, the scope will want this. So the other part is NOAA doesn't have a timeline. They can take as long as they want to issue their consultation. So working with them, a friend, trying to get onsite meetings, pre-permit discussions is really important to help streamline for us. And we have a pretty good relationship with them where they understand kind of this is what our standard is. This is where we're going. But it still takes a long time. But once that happens, then you start seeing other processes in place. It was just a very lengthy process. It's not unusual that a permit will be reviewed by 14 to 21 different state, federal, local agencies, Oregon's tribal nations, as well as other tribal nations outside of Oregon that have an interest. So you're probably familiar with the Yakima. They have interest in Oregon as well than this pier stone around the Laiakamati. And then the public gets a chance to provide comments as well. So it's a lengthy process. We spend a lot of time. The other factor with this is when we start this permit, we have to have a designing level of about 90 to 95% completion. We can't start it with preliminary. They want to know the type of equipment, the exact quantities. They want to know what is your method of demolition? Where are we going to store materials? Where are materials going to be called to? How many times do you think that excavator is going to be traveling in this location? How many flows of the pile driver do you think that they're going to take? How long will a vibratory pile take to be installed? So they want things down to minutia so that they can make their best determination on that consultation. So the permit itself is probably a 24 to 36 month, once submitted. Doing all of the pre-work to get it to that 95% is where we add additional time. Yes, Greg?
So there's a variance during construction. We certainly don't go back to those processes.
It depends on that variance. So we anticipate, so Buena Vista, which will start construction, they'll start mobilizing in June. We, even though we had a geotechnical report done about pile dragging, we wrote in a permit that we want the ability to use a drop hammer to drive the pile if a vibratory hammer will not work. So we had to anticipate what would be those conditions that we may encounter so that we don't have to go through another consultation process. And same thing with quantity. We have to be really confident. Otherwise, a hand-trailer new consultation could stop everything. So the designing process, it really starts with that landowner. We meet with them, we'll go onsite, we talk to them. We encourage them to bring in users because the user's perspective is often different from that land manager's perspective. We ask a ton of questions. We ask, well, what kind of activity used to happen here? How long have you owned the property? Have you ever had archaeological stuff? Do you know if you have a wetland? What kind of utilities? And you can just imagine, they're all of these guys are blazing over. It's like, don't worry about it. We're going to send you email. We're going to have these conversations. We start asking questions to see what they know about this property. We ask, what is that problem we're trying to solve? Isn't that the ranch too short? Is it that the parking areas are too narrow? Well, in a lot of older facilities, that's really true because they were designed when the vehicles in the boats were a lot smaller. So we ask these things. We ask them, okay, so what do you want to see at the end of this? What is your goal? Because sometimes our perspective when we get back in the office is a different situation. Sometimes we're here, you need to have a three-lane boat ramp. We look at this as a parking area from only a company of 20 vehicles. Three lanes doesn't make sense. So what's really that bottleneck? It's how the maneuver is set up. People can't get to this easily. And so it backs up traffic. And so it's like, try to do it and then we can come back and say, hey, this is kind of what we see. So we need to find this. We collect our work and we develop this conceptual design, which is a very high-level sketch. It kind of is that idea. This is kind of what we see. Let's vet it again. Let's see, are we hitting these marks that we want to accomplish? Share it with users. And there are times where we say, we need a couple of process. We want you to host a meeting. We will be happy to come and present because we want to make sure this is really vetted. Just with a couple of people doesn't often work. We want to know more. So we will do those. Then we move into that preliminary part. And that's where we start getting that high-level design. These are all the different pieces that we are looking for. So the no-rides analysis. Mentioned flood plain floodway. How to balance that though? There are detailed study areas that give us less than 1/32 of an inch that we can impact the water level for flooding. That's a tight, tight tolerance. And we do not want anyone to be in trouble with the National Flood Insurance Program bringing deviation. So this is why it has to be so tight and we spend so much time on this. And you can imagine that if you are a little city or a county who doesn't do this very often, this can all seem extremely overwhelming. And a lot of things, terminology, they don't understand. A lot of give and take in trying to interpret some of the federal codes. It's a bit challenging. Then we get into the other components. So we work with them on an integrated discovery plan. We now require any ground disturbing grant to be referred to us. They have one. We want to make sure they're run in place. It's good for them. And if they, that entity has never done one, we've got some great templates. And we work with them to make sure they've got an appropriate integrated discovery plan to meet whatever type of activities happening onsite. And those plans are really, in the event that there are cultural or historic items that are found during any kind of ground disturbing activity. Great to look at and a question.
These projects, they will have different pillar bone entities involved. I'm always amazed how many. So at what stage do you work out who does what, who's charged? Do you always try to reach an agreement where you're dealing with one contractor instead of multiple contractors in the same project?
Yeah. So everything, which actually is a grant to the landowner. So a big part of it is we find out, what are your critical goals? What kind of things do you have to go through? And we find out, do you have the capacity to buy your materials so they're on hand? It stays on the overhead, they're there. We've got some weirdness with shipping bills. If they have that capacity, we encourage them to do that. But we generally will have one prime for the construction and they will have multiple subs depending on the brightness. For the specialty things, shipper has a list of archaeologists that have the credentials to do work in state. But we will also consult with the affected tribes and ask them, do you have concerns with any of these five companies? As we're going to assist X party with giving quotes to do some work. Because the tribes have concerns, that means that report is going to be challenged and it's more work. We want to make sure that they feel confident for the type of survey that is being requested, that the quality will meet their expectations and their needs, as well as that shipper will agree that it's a complete report. So there'll be different phases. We have a consultant on retainer with us for our archaeological work. And so we lock and contract with West directly to do that type of work when we need it. And then sometimes the landowners will come in and say, hey, we want a grant to do this. And that's, that's great too. We work very closely with that landowner. And it is a lot of communication.
So I think that's kind of what Craig is getting at. So when you're dealing with all these different agencies, really, you're the one who is the point. We're helping the landlord to traverse all of these different different things they need to get done, all these different agencies that they may need to contact. You are the contact, we are the contact.
It's not only that area, it's also funding. As we look at these projects, you got a portion of the desert paying for it, you got a portion of the owners paying for it, you got a portion of the person that's working for it. It all falls behind, we need to work through that. You know, essence out of the heritage, man, I didn't get this much money to do. But I'm always amazed with that. So that happens before you get to the stage, right?
Yeah, we do. I like the puzzles. And that's kind of the idea, every project is a big puzzle. We have to get all the right people, the right partnerships together to make something successful. And it does take a lot of time. But I would also say that the landowners are very key. A willing landowner, because these aren't quick and easy projects. If everything was replacing docks with no pilings, no abutment, pull up one set out and float another one in, we could do this very quickly. That's a nine-month process. But as soon as you start coming out, any ground disturbing activity, it triggers a whole other level. And we want to be transparent. I tell every applicant that, especially in my waterway access, we have new applicants. This is exciting stuff. We want to go into this, but we are in a honeymoon relationship. We love each other, we're working through this, we are insane. And at the end of the term of that agreement, 25 years later, we want you to come back and say, oh, I just did it, this was great. Let's renew those vows and let's do this again.
I'd have started 20 years.
Because it really is a process. And they're going to manage it. We say, they are that front-facing aspect to what a voter sees, right? The voters are using that site, and if they don't maintain it, if they don't understand what to maintain, what to monitor, if they don't understand what the purpose of it is, they're not going to have that buy-in. Their staff isn't going to have the buy-in. And all they're going to do is piss the voter a hole in the hill with us. That's not what we want. We want them to take pride in what they get, to take that ownership. Because then, the people who pay for us, they're getting their money's worth, right? It's a win-win when we do this, and that's what our goal is. And this is overwhelming. This is a complex process to do anything. When you look at Oregon's waterways, majority of our waterways have some port of endangered species. When you look at water quality, there, almost every water body has some water quality limitation. When you look at the upland species, that's a whole other component of it. It's a few things falls where we are helping voters have access by helping the landowners through this very complex process. And it does take a lot of time, it takes a lot of discussion, a lot of facilitating meetings with folks. Even with the people who have deadliness a few times, a lot of our counties are both, like in Douglas County, has 42 voting access sites. It does a few times, but the process changes, requirements change, statutes change. There's a video of nationwide permits with the court, but the nationwide permits are nationwide. We have water elevation that tells us we can't use those nationwide. So they go through a new document, it's what they call SLOS, standard local operating procedures for endangered species. Those have another process. And so we stay on top of this, we get advice on what is the best course of action. When we look at this site, I moved to a site recently in the city of Plowton, and we looked at three different places for potential access. And the first one, I was trying to find something somewhat positive to say, but everything I was like, eh, just too much vertical. There's wetlands there. Yeah, this one is not here, what's your next option? We went through this, and finally asked the last one, said, this is where you need it. The other ones is a not good location, which is why this is the bad location. And they was like, thank you. This helps me, we direct to start our planning process to redevelop this part. This is great. It's like, perfect. Now let's start doing the rest of it. So then I want to talk about the grant process. Because there are some questions about how, what happens behind the scenes before you see those recommendations and those applications. So this is just a quick refresher on eligibility. So WAG is waterway access, we have to use their voting, right? So not motorized, motorized money. And then through small grant holders, just so you can see, so the asterisk means it's for non-governmental purposes. And so I just want to put that in there just so that everybody knew who was eligible for what type of funding and so the application. So, right? When we started, when we merged waterway access, we heard from folks that they thought the ideal project would be a physical improvement onsite in combination with some type of education. What a great thing to have. That's fantastic. That will be what we do. And so we merged the two together. It's long, it's 14 pages plus attachments, there's nine sections and four appendices. Because it's capturing all of the information we often need to know whether or not it's ready to have money in place. After talking to folks, I really think we need to modify some things. And I'm planting the seed now, because in October, the board will be approving the procedure guide, the application, the ranking criteria that we will use to start soliciting for cycle one of the 23 to 25 final binding. And so I wanted to plant the seeds of some things we're hearing about, we're thinking about, and then I'll give the board an update in kind of June on how I think they're finding out and talking to folks and getting some comments on these. So that when I bring something to October, it should be pretty straightforward. So I think we need to separate. I think we need to make access its standalone application and education outreach under certain community stuff needs to be its separate one. And a large part is, this 14-page application can seem very overwhelming and daunting. But if you have a smaller project, when you look at the toy, how much resource am I going to spend to build a house, a patient out for $25,000? Is it worth that time, or is that a barrier? So I think if we separated the two and made a simpler application for those type of projects, that would really help eliminate the barrier for many in smaller nonprofits to be able to apply for this kind of things. I also want to add and clarify some questions about programs. So if they have a program, what is their vision for that sustainability? Will it be able to be a sustained program within that two years? Thinking that the first year is kind of a pilot, maybe work out some things. That second year, they should be a little more stable. And by that third year, they should be able to operate a program. And I think we need to put that in there so that we can see what is their vision for doing this and having thought about it. And then I think we need to ask a little bit more information about the non-governmental organizations such as I'll figure it out, how many staff? How long have you been in business or doing this? Some of those. Because there are a lot of non-governmental organizations. Some of them are very new. And some of them are having really rapid changes of staffing and may not have the capacity to administer a grant. So I think we need to ask a couple more questions to just help us make a better decision on stability. Or will they need some additional assistance to be successful? Or can I partner them with somebody else who may be able to provide a relationship, like a mentor on something? So those are some of the things that I'm thinking about, exploring to try to help out on some of the application and streamlining also furthering the efforts. So the evaluation. We have 22 criteria, six categories, 505 points. That's a lot of stuff. And we've downed three cycles where we've had waterway access funds. And there are a few things that I think we should modify. So the application piece, I put these in here, these are correct ones. For the most part, these are okay. But I do think we need to change the score for first-time applicants from good to more of an average. Because we're fairly harsh critics. It takes a lot for somebody to get above the average. And having an extra 10 points often can swing some things where it's a it can make a difference in evaluation. So I think we need to do that. And I think we need to have different criteria for education programs versus access programs and not try to bore them together. So they would be ranked based on similar type of features.
Well, why wouldn't you have another category just for first-time applicants? Give them an extra few points. If, you know, given that everything else is in order, if they hadn't ever applied for anything before. Instead of just automatically giving them a good.
Yeah, but we could do that too. Because with water access, we're seeing a lot of first-time applicants. I'm embarrassed to say, I didn't realize the city of Pramalia had waterfront access. I think that's fantastic. We have an opportunity in the future to do this. But that's not going to be the first time that's going to happen. And we need to take some of that into consideration. So there are some things in this part that I think we need to tweak a bit. There are not a lot of huge changes. So then on this part, there is a lot of interest on how to evaluate activity. So like during today's, you know, discussion, we talked about, well, we have mechanic park, there's Miller's Landing, do we need is there a need for both? And so I think we need to build in another way to evaluate things like that. Because it may not, our current structure may not allow us to fairly look at this. Because they each are different. And I think there are each much appeal to different types of users. And that aspect isn't necessarily in these criteria where we have the capacity to look at and go, okay, this is serving this type of use predominantly, this one could do this, this is primarily a takeout, a bit more of a put-in. So there's some other modifications that will do that. And I will say, our, this step, we're going to vet really deeply the applicants. Because this is how we get their money. And they're going to want to know how to approach this. What is their strategy and how they're going to put together their application? Yes?
On the voting activity opportunity, this is this is out of 500 points. So if you've got a facility that's isolated by itself, let's say 150 miles, I don't know if you're in the situation. You only get five additional points for it out of 500. Even though there is nothing else around. So is that what you're concerned? It's not even a credit.
It's very true. There's a lot of lakes where you only access only anywhere around. That's it. And there's some structures on river. The Inca has several areas where you're looking at 35, 40 miles with no other access. So you're right, it's trying to balance that.
Is there another way to somehow give that location additional points so it has more weight and consideration?
Yeah, that's exactly what I want to explore. I also want to explore the idea of the waterway rules. And with this, I want to talk to owners. Like as an example, we talked a little about electric water lakes, having that opportunity for electric water. Is to look at some small lakes that has the application goal. Okay, how many of these are electric water? How many are not? Does that, is that more preferential for this access site? Because it has a way to help with accessibility. To look at some of those elements with the waterway rules to figure, are we providing another opportunity within our rules to help some access? And I've got a couple ideas, but like I said, there's some things that I want to, that the folks, to ask them, did this bother you? Was this probably a concern? Would you think this is going to be fair? And then also run some scenarios to have staff freeze force an application to see, would we have recommended funding or we do not have recommended funding? And then this one, this area is probably has some of the biggest changes. Because right now, we're really not taking into consideration environmental justice. And I want to have some questions that take that into consideration and expand the diversity equity and inclusion to really have that as a solid part of our evaluation process. And we're developing this, and I got to head Joe and do a test on the B lakes. We're taking terrestrial survey data, and the response, we take their zip codes, and we figure out, okay, how many people are going to Detroit? And where are they coming from? And we start looking at this percentage, because voters travel places. What is kind of that benchmark? Do we take that into consideration, they're pulling from these communities into this water bottle? Because Detroit is kind of a destination place. Do we, because voters, you know, we ask, look at the travel, how far are they traveling? And, you know, in Eastern Oregon, they generally travel a lot further than they do in the Atlantic Valley. So how far are they traveling? So we can take a local to a regional level on what populations are pulling into this body of water to help evaluate that in some other criteria. So we're looking at this, and I think it's going to be a good tool and help inform us as to where are people, what kind of trends are we seeing? Is it, you know, a lot of people coming? I was, when we ran, I was like, I was really surprised at how many people are coming out of bigger counties to go to Detroit. That was a bit of a surprise. But that was good information. So we're going to look at that as to try to be a tool that we can use.
Businesses are located on state, state board. We have users coming from other space to use our facility. So they benefit from that. The program that we have here is permanent work bonus. How do you weigh that into this? Do I start to get that all under diversity equity inclusion here or do it fall somewhere else? I think it's great, take a couple of space, we go through them. But I don't know how bad to add any consideration of how we spend our money.
Yeah, it's challenging, because tourism is a process thing, right? We want people to come and spend money in our state. We want to have recreation be part of that, right? It's a huge part of our economy, locally and well nationally. A lot of it comes to who I'm working with. So when I work with state parks, they're able to give me some data at some of their parks as to where people are coming. Sometimes they can do some anecdotal things. I'm looking at where their campground registration, where they traveled from. And it's challenging, because you're right. There are many sites on the Columbia, on the Idaho border that are heavily used by non-Oregon voters. And I'm not sure we can really factor that in, because we don't often have the data other than looking for owners to give information. If they don't have it, we ask them, hey, can you go through your part on some busy weekend? And just kind of, you know, do a mental note of how many out-of-state lakes? Yeah, we did 23. It's a hard, a hard thing, because we just don't have data. So we're not surveying that, we can't to know. It comes from the landowners' observations, as well as we talk to ours, we can't put an official wire. As well as we talk to Forest Department official wildlife. They're seeing, because I've asked the marine people, they're a lot of knowledge, and we'll ask them, you know, what are your observations? So, we do get a lot of observational data.
Do you ever go into a partnership?
So, we, we have, so, Health Canyon, Idaho Tower provided some money on that, as well as Idaho Official Wildlife also provided some services to help for us to get through that process. So, we, we will be really evaluate case-by-case basis of what is happening. So, this is kind of the question. Does it matter whether or not we have applicant match and all the other sources? Or does it really matter to the board, what is that match? Previously, the board, we wanted to know about those local contributions. So, Westport, the Columbia River Yachting Association, they've given $5,000. It's not a lot of money, but it was a lot of money to them to give in to a project. And, no, we still have this association, they picked in. We had a Harley club, they said. It doesn't, isn't important for to have that called out separately, and evaluated separately, from what the applicant has brought to the table? Yes?
Uh, I think, for my perspective, and again, going back to the waterway access, especially. To me, that's really important, because again, it's talking about, we're trying to brief on these sort of communities. And maybe it's this particular organization's framing the application, but some other organization, like I'm saying, it's not made up of the library, but they're going to kick in $1,000 towards it. And, they're only asking the marine board to come up with 10% of the total project cost. That, to me, is a very different project, and that same group was asking us for 60%, and it was just us and them. To me, my perspective is that probably could be the project, because of those some points. So, I like to see it in, like I encourage people to do. And, from those application projects, the United Technology Day, is, you know, time has been really creative. Again, so with that one was first way of, of let's take non-official voters out and take that on the ground. So, what's the next one? Well, we're hearing that swimming is a barrier for a lot of underserved voters. So, how about a partnership with the By Swimming Initiative, and Kaiakon Program? And something like that, to me, yeah, yeah, this is what we're really talking about.
Okay. And, and so, for you, you want to see two separate evaluation criteria for what the actual landowner or the managing?
The sponsor, the marine board, and my other, other organizations.
Okay.
And for me, it just depends on the percentage of, and not the percentage, but the, the total. I mean, because if you're talking about a huge grant that they've applied for, and they only have 25% match, that may be a huge amount of money. So, to only get one point for that is, is a big difference. And yet, you know, if you thought a $10,000 project, and you got, you know, they came up with like $2,500, that, that, that's different to me. I, I just really think the overall percentage of the, it doesn't tell you the whole picture, when you look at the percentage.
I agree. So, would you like to see a sliding scale? So, if the project, say, was $250,000 or less, 25% is $50,000. That, for many folks, would be much more manageable, and if we were at a million-dollar project, and they get a couple of quarter million of that.
Right.
So, to come up with a sliding scale for points based on, if it was larger, maybe, you know, that quarter million, they couldn't quite come up with, if they got 200,000. They should at least get some credit, especially if they were able to leverage other sources?
Well, that's, that's where what Laura's talking about is, is really beneficial, is because when, when they start to access other sources, then that's really, to be able to get to that 25%, I think that that, or even if they get to 23, I, I think that that really shows initiative and investment in the, the total cost of the project. And for me, that's what I see. I, I mean, I really appreciate when they were out there buying other matching money. To help.
Larry was getting the cancer, and I was, yeah.
I think you're good, I just wonder, kind of, if you can say why?
Yeah.
I think you're, I think you're good.
Yes, okay. Yeah, I think that's a really good point, because that's what they have often thought about, is whether or not the smaller projects and 25%, they can easily come like to the, say, a $50,000 level project, and then they come with $25,000. That's probably not that hard for many, so they would automatically get that maximum 30 points, and that may be a disservice to a project that's, you know, half a million dollars, and that entity can't find it, but they've managed to leverage other sources to have a good match. And, and that's, that's a really good thing. I think that it's difficult exploring some kind of a, a scale to recognize the points for smaller projects from larger projects. Fees. So, this is another one I have a question on. Historically, the board has always prioritized free, 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 that we want, and fees are now becoming much more common. It's not unusual that $5 is on a lot of sites. There are still, let's say, the bulk of the facilities that participate in the maintenance program are still free. Understanding that we're also wanting those landowners to include more match, and spend more money on operations, is this unshame too much? Should this be readjusted where free is still the first choice we have, but maybe it's not as significant of reductions? And this is where I am here, for me?
Yeah, so this would be an addition to your, uh, somebody, maybe you can rent skirts and put them on.
Yep, so they have their waterway access permit?
Mm-hmm. And then, this would be, there's some, partnerships already that's. I mean, I, I think what makes it complicated is, not so much the amount of planning, but all the pieces that they have, regardless of the needs. And I think if we're to, I mean, I think it's good, but I was to use the charging for these, certainly about things. Uh, but I think just streamlining that process for some reason, perhaps, if you use a 10-second mode, I think. I think that's a challenge. It's, but I think, I think just out of the getting 30, 40, 30, I think.
Okay.
It, for me, it just depends on what, what happens with the fee. So, if it is a dedicated fund, like, we're going to start collecting these partnerships, and we want to put it towards the match for this project resource, whatever they have. For me, that makes a big difference on, on where they, you know, what the, what it is. If it's just going into their general fund, and they still, and it doesn't come up with a match as much, then it makes a big difference.
Okay. All right, so that's something I gotta incorporate into the application, where they identify what that money is required, what a lot of the staff into their system.
So, I have a question, that's the other one, that's pretty stuff. And I don't want to put, you know, spot stuff in it. It's, so, nicely presented. Um, I know some organizations I've been involved with, we don't treat a small fee on a class. A lot of people sign up, and then they'll say, oh, well, I know my fellow by membership. And we found that just putting a boss, we, it just gives people to actually come to you, and that kind of possibility, yeah?
Yeah, no, we, we, we've asked, we just, and their response, we have lost. Uh, so, I agree, and I don't think we, we, you know, can contribute anything. But, what, what, the challenge that I've seen is, just to give an example, where it says, uh, if somebody wants to buy a boat, but that understanding, you're acceptable, you know, you know, like, don't get it, what I'm thinking. And there's not a lot of information, but I think that's what the challenge is, probably going to be. If one were to start recording my views, it, what are the consequences there? But I think maybe better understanding how taxes versus the fee, that'd be, that'd be a challenge.
I'm thinking like, you know, some of those grant applications, the WCA for education, they're, you know, taking a group of people, we, our industry, go reach out, um, let's try. And so, if you have 10 votes and you're complete, and if you have a point, participants, how many people sign up, and we're just going to be charged, and how many people don't show? That's, that's a fit to you. And if those people, maybe they attend all their, okay. They think a little bit more like, you know, you and I just spent my subscription over there.
And then also, if they don't show, then there's other people who didn't have the opportunity to come in, so.
It's just kind of nice of, we kind of, it's other, other realms of, um, doing some education stuff. But just the small fee will get people, which is too much. I think we're visiting the, the educational fees. Giving points for a very fee, I think, probably.
The other thing with an education fee too, one of the things that, that we found with the nonprofit that I worked with, was that if they offered a minimal fee, like, if it was $10, and a participant could pay a dollar, they were still invested, and then they have a scholarship to help with balance. So, that it helps to reach someone that is serving you, um, and, and serves the voters. But, but it's still accomplished, they still showed up.
And can we offer, or we can suggest or recommend that they, that they can apply for scholarship money to help people get into classrooms as well, if that was a barrier? And so far, people, so they've been able to work it to where they can reduce the cost, or have it be very minimal, or they do a, almost like a, you invest, and then once you show up, we, we give it to you back. So, it's kind of like, hey, we're going to charge you, and then if you show up, great, you're going to get that $10 back. Because I, I think that's important, but, you know, after hearing this, I do think we need to adjust the points, because it is a pretty big jump, depending on what it is. Some of the overnight trips, in talking to, that woman, some of those are very expensive. And they, they charge a small fee, they offer scholarships, they offer ways to reduce that financial impact, so that, so somebody can still go, that maybe cannot afford it. But, when you think about the logistics, the food, the equipment, the staff, all the stuff that goes into it, they would get, duh, nothing for this, and, and I, I'd love to see more of those opportunities. Some of those overnight things, that, that next level of opportunity, for somebody to learn and enjoy their power. So, this is great feedback. And then with this one, I need to appropriate the recognition of all the specialty reports, and things that are really a project, because varying the hundred, other eligible elements, really encompasses them, and those are two pieces that need to get done. And then, the question 16 is the one I want to break apart a lot more. I want to include the environmental component in there, this is addressing an environmental impact, whether it's erosion, whether it's guidance in the base of species, and you've got other things that are going on. So, when this, when I, that you were, is, give you an update in June, there will be some of these things I'm going to have to address well. So, kind of a, I want to give you that heads up, so you can think about it, and if you have other, if you have to the meeting, then we call, drop me an email. Yes, Chris?
This is one I, I'm sure, number 15, type of access program. We're giving points to what their, what their needs are at the facility. And one facility may have greater needs than another. If I have restroom, say, for example, if the facility doesn't have restroom now, they get 10 points for it. If the facility has restroom, and it just be your opener or something, they get 10 points for it. I don't know how to change it. I would like to have it weighted based on state of the facility, if you will. Uh, so, they, so the, most needs are really getting addressed. I know there are some arenas out there that are pretty bad shape, have a lot of needs. There are other arenas that are very decent shape, but they need some tweaks. I want to put the money where it's most needed, so I'm concerned whether this does it.
No, in your, exactly right. I've talked to my engineers several times about this one, and we were thinking of, almost like subcategory, is it a repair? Okay, if it's a repair, it's least type of point. If it is brand new, it's least type of point. If it is a replacement of something that has failed, it's least type of point. To weigh in on those things that are a significant improvement, versus something to extend the useful life, and be able to weigh, if we don't do this, I'll be going to lose access, I'll be going to create a huge liability, if we don't address it, versus. How high of a priority is this? If we don't do this right now, are we still, if it's still safe? Is it still okay, and we need to, you know, maybe it's still good, because we have money to be sold, but maybe it can wait until another opportunity? And that's the part that isn't really addressed right now, because it really is, hey, you want to do your laundry? Okay, what is that, that replacing, you know, eight feet on the top? Or is that because your, your ramp has failed? And, and so, you're right, I think we need to tweak some of this one.
Then one other, you know, is going, number 60, accessibility ADA, 2 points out of 500, concerned.
Good. There are other parts to talk about ADA, and that's one I want to expand more, where we're not looking at it. There are times where we will need the code, where I cannot reduce it further. So, as an example, I have a side organ, a stick park, at an 18-foot vertical elevation in a very skinny area. I can't do switchback, I can't put under the gainway, but we're going to be compliant. And then I want to deal with the criteria, have we removed additional barriers by doing things to lessen slope? And so, I want to expand that, right, because I think there is a difference.
One of the problems with anyone, accessibility ADA, people think, it's just being done for this line. Everybody gets it, everybody bad at this, done it, the bright assets to everybody. There needs to be a way to counter it.
Yes, yep, you're exactly right. And, in this one, let me do it. And I need to factor in some of the archaeological accessibility items, because that can change. So, some of these are ready to break apart, because it's, so, like, everything underneath the specialized blood plane elements that would win category, that's becoming problematic, because we'll have 30% of one park, and 20% of another one, and it's, we're just going to break it apart, where we can evaluate each site. And some of these may be either or, like, if, if these are not part of this project, we're not going to penalize an application by saying, ah, the notice is required, so you can get a point. We'll be back up with that, that balance to recognize some of those. And then, these are things we added, once we got the waterway access program. So, we have 50 points that the boating safety program can choose to award at our most. And there's a couple of things that we want to expand on here to include outfitter guide standing. We want to know, you know, is this organization an outfitter guide? Should they be an outfitter guide, that we ran into that? But also, we're starting to see some organizations, you is an outfitter guide. I want to make sure to this review, that that is an outfitter guide that is in good standing with us as an agency, if it's on a grant that we're going to fund. So, I want to include some of those things. We're also going to include some subcategories, just specifically we look at on it. But it, it's a piece that has some definite value to us, to have that for, and look at it from their knowledge, their experience, the feedback of marine people, their experience, the feedback of marine professional, outfit or guides, the education components. Um, and so a lot of times the decisions that voting safety will make, obviously the environment will make, are really the difference on whether a project is going to get funded or not. Uh, and then it is the policy environment. So this is one, I started thinking about this and some of the other things we're doing. And I want to make sure that we're considering, um, ADBs on whether or not, so if we're in a, if we're at a facility that has a marina, do we have history of them not making sure their tenants, their customers have current registration? Or having insurance at facilities, is that becoming a problem? Uh, what is a supporting marina if that's applicable? We want to add a couple more pieces to make sure that we are captured on the information that that program's involved in as well. And then public comment process. So, oh, yes, Chris?
I mean, where?
Oh, okay. All right.
All right. Could we need to drop you after, it's a better point.
I got one, I got three spotted.
Each.
Okay, so public comment, and I will do this fast, Chris. This is a unique thing. I have agencies who laughed at us as a genie or nuts. Why would you invite the public to comment on your application? And I said, because they should, they should. And they are totally amazed and they have eaten their words because of the positive feedback we're getting. This is not a complaint session. When we solicit this, we are getting a ton of positive supportive things of the work that, of where the money is going, where the voter investment is happening. I think this is a hundred percent a win and I intend to continue doing this because it's phenomenal. Um, I kind of already mentioned this, yes?
I shouldn't ask questions, should I? What do you do with the public comment? Give them a response?
If they ask questions, we answer their questions. If they give us comment, we say thank you very much for this comment and it's going to be shared with the board.
You don't have, you know.
We see it with full application.
They don't get a response, right?
Yep. And we also share it with the applicants. They need to know what the public has said as well, so we share it with them too.
So, biggest challenge I'm glad I was there, is this agreement of the public, getting them to understand why. So that's always a concern. If they want design change, you say no.
We, we work, we work really hard to get them to understand something. And, and sometimes we're just not going to come to an agreement. I, I think that's part of government and there are some times the public is just not going to like something. Um, so, and I've already mentioned this a couple of times. The board will be reviewing and approving all of the different forms, applications, criteria, the evaluation process, um, prior to us soliciting for cycle one, definitely start that process in mid-November. So if the board has some recommendations, they can be incorporated and then we're going to start that process for our cycle one. And then partnerships. We work with people throughout this process. We work with voters and they have a ton of opportunities to come. They have opportunities to come in through the board process, through the landowners' processes, through the permitting processes, through the state, federal, and local interviews. There is a ton of opportunity and we go into these where every time we talk to somebody here, we'll make a partnership, a relationship. So the bottom left, I hopefully you can see my cursor, this is a group of volunteers. These were members of, and friends in the middle of river steel matters and they made a commitment to do some repairing, planning, and mitigation. And it was a fantastic thing that we did. This is a, a whole group of people who went out on the twolatin to the site access points. Um, fantastic thing that both of the keepers did. We had right people there, we were able to look at things from a water perspective and identify potential locations for access for connectivity to a water trail. And they've done some fantastic work connecting with folks and having public interaction. Um, this is a, a meeting where, and everybody's in a mask because we're in COVID and you can tell we are very spread apart. Um, but this was, we're being with the Forest Collaborative, uh, Willander River Keeper, the trail, several afterward that, um, you can add access on the middle fork of the middle fork of the Willander River. Um, this one here is where we're talking with a whole bunch of permitting agencies about some issues. And this is just a couple of examples of some sign with a lot of different people who have become involved in this project. Uh, I like to say everything becomes this big family. And we really take the aspect of a partnership very seriously because we want these long-term relationships. We want success. We want that landowner at the end of the project to be proud of what they have and to serve the voters for a long time. So that is all I've got. If there's any other questions, let me know. If you have thoughts today, tomorrow, next month, a year from now. All, drop me an email and I'd be happy to answer any of them.
Do we have this file?
Uh.
Uh, I will send it.
And then also, um, when you rescore, you said you're going to take a few of these after we get this done. We're going to rescore a couple of these to see if they were going to be, if they would have been recommended. Will you contact those agencies and encourage them to resubmit?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, when we, when we do this, we're definitely going to want this. I, okay, there's, there is a part of me to say we're denied. And usually that's when it's not. And way along the way past before we had waterway access, uh, we had some that were under respect, um, arising a lot of times. But we're able to serve all recreational voters and it's fantastic. So I think we're in a good place and we're going to continue to modify and program the chores and learn more. Um, if we can get better.
Colleen, would you have any questions?
I don't. This was all very helpful and informative, so thank you, Janine and team.
You're very welcome.
Anybody else? Thank you very much, Janine. And we will take a quick break. We have something else after this one?
Oh, okay.
So I just wanted to make sure, okay. That would be the end of our work session then, and thank you very much. We will reconvene tomorrow morning for our board meeting at the River House on the Deschutes. Uh, we will call the order at eight thirty a.m.
Bye, see you all tomorrow.
Thank you.
Bye.
Nice to meet you, really.